I am showing 6:00 PM, so I'm prepared to call this meeting to order. This is the Hingham Select Board. The date is December 7th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Members of the Select Board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording this meeting? I am seeing no response, so I will turn to the first item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the minutes from November 9th and November 30th. I am prepared to proceed. Bill, are you?
Yeah.
And Liz?
Yes.
Then I'll accept a motion on the November 9th minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
They're approved. November 30th, I'll take a motion for.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 30th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we do a roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
They are approved. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is we will hear from Sue Nickerson for a fiscal year 21 fun balance memo presentation. Sue, how are you?
Good evening. How is everybody? I am going to share my screen. And can everybody see it? And can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. This is my yearly memo to the Town Administrator Select Board and Advisory Committee on how the Town of Hingham has done as of June 30th fiscal year end. This memo is for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, or fiscal year 2021. The total general fund balance as of June 30th, 2021 is $47,796,707. This compares to last year's FY 2020 fiscal fund balance total of $42,189,077. This represents a $5.6 million increase to fund balance, total fund balance. The annual expenditures per the town's financial policy for FY 21 was $111,317,208. The percent of unassigned fund balance to total annual expenditures is 30.85%. The amount of excess assigned fund, unassigned fund balance, which is the over 20% of TAE, would be $12,083,036. The table right below shows you the components of all fund, total general fund balance. As you can see, the restricted amount is now zero. It used to be $1.25 million from the sale of the Hershey House. With the annual town meeting in 2021, we are using that $1.25 million for the article on the Public Safety facility. And so it went from restricted fund balance and it will, it is now lying in with the subsequent years expenditures in a sun, assigned fund balance, which I will get into in a minute. The other portions of fund balance is committed fund balance of $4.7 million. That is comprised of the stabilization funds, special articles. What that is, is the articles from town meeting 2020 for fiscal 21 that has not been expended yet. So we had to restrict that fund balance to make sure those articles can still use that money. The Lincoln School Apartments of $1 million and unused non-excluded debt. We started this a couple of years ago. We level funded un, non-excluded debt in the delta between what we pay and what we budget. We are restricting for further use in future debts. And that is about $220,000 right now. The assigned fund balance of $8.7 million consists of the encumbrance of a little less than $2 million and subsequent years expenditures of $6.8 million. And what that is, is anything in town meeting 21 for fiscal 22. That includes Article 6 of about $5 million and the articles for the Public Safety Facility. And there was another 200,000. So all those combined were $6.7 million. Everything else, when you take that out of the total fund balance, becomes unassigned. The unassigned is $34,346,478. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I do have, I'm gonna start out.
Okay.
You began saying that there are no restricted funds.
Yes, right, right here where.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But then you, I thought you said that under committed, we had restricted funds.
Well, those are committed funds, not restricted.
Right, okay, so.
There's different portions.
Right, okay, so those are committed. Then let me ask, what's the difference between committed and restricted?
It's basically an auditing description of fund balance. The restrictive, we could only use for certain purposes. That was the sale of the Hershey House. Committed is committed fund balance. We are those special articles. We can only use that fund balance for those special articles. Assigned is assigned. We assigned it because everybody encumbered money. They're just portions of fund balance from the the Accounting Standards Board.
Yes. So just for, for my purposes, restricted and committed are essentially the same to the extent that these funds can only be used for certain designated purposes.
Exactly.
Got it. Liz, any, any questions at this point?
Do, just a comment. So for example, the, the Windows project, the million dollars for the Lincoln School Apartments, right, that was voted in town meeting 2016, I think, and now we're finally using it. One question, when we're talking about, when we're doing the MOAs for the collective bargaining agreements and the pay is retroactive to July 1st, that is coming out of, what, the encumbrance, or where's the Article 6?
That is not in fund balance. That, that will be, that is an Article 4 transfer.
Okay.
Those are operating expenses.
Yes.
So that's, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Basically, our fund balance is like the, the savings account.
Right.
And this, and this memo just describes as of June 30th, how much money we have in our savings account and what we can use it for. So the change of.
We're not letting you go yet, so I didn't ask.
Okay.
I didn't ask Mr. Bill Ramsey if he had any questions.
You're on mute.
It's much better that way than we can.
It is, it is. I had the same question you had, you have between restricted and committed, so thanks for answering it.
Great. And before we move forward, Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add, or Michelle, or Art?
Nope, I'm good. As always, Sue, you know, presents this very thoroughly. This is a annual report comes out at the beginning of December every year after the audit is complete for the prior year and we know what condition our fund balance is in. So thanks to Sue for all of her work.
Thank you.
And Joe, I'll just add, Sue pointed out the $12 million number. That's large for a number of reasons, but one is, one of which is that the Advisory Committee is considering a new way of calculating total annual expenditures where we're removing the enterprise funds from that number. So that's part of why that number is so large. And then also we have looked at, Sue has done an analysis over the last 20 years of fund balance usage and just want to caution that we do generally use around $2 million a year for other articles, different transfers that we may want to not count on the full 12, but maybe 10 or so truly being available as excess on assigned fund balance.
Got it.
Yep.
Sorry, Sue.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll let you continue. I just want to make sure we had any preliminary questions handled. So please.
No, no problem. And another reason why it has grown, you also have to remember, we did use fund balance from, for FY 21 to 22, so basically, we didn't use it all, so we're actually putting it back plus some. So the change in fund balance of $5.6 million is mostly attributable to three categories. A surplus of revenue of approximately 2.2 million, a budget surplus or turnbacks of approximately 4.38 million. And I just want to emphasize, this includes 2.9 million in receivables from federal COVID-related reimbursements. And minus the use of fund balance of approximately $1 million. That $1 million was Article 11 for the reserve fund and the accelerated capital outlay to buy the ambulance of 400,000.
So just staying on this point, could you highlight the distinction between a surplus of revenue and a and a budget surplus? You, you, you talked about there's a difference between those. What's the difference?
Well, there's a, there's a difference between revenue and expenses. So
Right.
we have a surplus of the revenue.
Which is, we received more funds than we had projected.
Than we anticipated, yes.
Right. And then the budget surplus?
Turnbacks from all the departments.
So this would be.
They didn't use their full, they didn't use their full budget.
Got it.
Now, the 4.38 million, if we take out the 2.9 million in receivables from federal COVID-related expenses.
Yes.
Then our normal turnbacks are around a million and a half, which is about 1.3% of our total budget. That's saying we are budgeting at a 98, 99 percentile, which is so good.
And with respect to the, what you've called the COVID, the receivables from COVID-related reimbursements, am I correct that, though these are being booked on what I call an accrual basis, that we don't have the cash in hand, but that they have, it's essentially been accrued as owing to us?
Exactly. And we've, we've already received at least half of it.
My next question. Okay, great. Thank you.
And this cat, this chart right here depicts the surpluses of the, the revenue. Basically, a little slight increase in state aid and tax levy, but the major increases in local receipts. And that was from 1.49 million from the payback from the Weir River Water System and .48 million in license and permit revenue. Those were the, the major categories of our surplus of revenue. The total general fund expenditures, this chart will show you the budget surpluses. Public safety and education lead the pack. But just want to remind you that public safety has a receivable in there of 1.3 million from FEMA and the school budget had one point, almost 1.4 million in receivables from Plymouth County CARES Act. And the rest are on your screen. There are some receivables. And basically, these are turnbacks that are normally turnbacks from each department. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Just so I'm clear, in terms of the turnbacks, are these, getting back to the difference between cash and accrual, are these cash that was not spent during the fiscal year, but perhaps the liability or the expenditure was accrued, but wasn't paid out, or is it simply, there was no accrual, there was no actual expense incurred?
No, these are, besides the receivables.
Yeah.
These are all cash back.
Okay, so these are cash.
They did not spend it. Yep.
Got it. Okay.
And that is my fund balance memo.
Well done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now that we're concluded, I'll go back to Liz to see if you have any further questions.
So, um, thank you, Sue. So just a question about the budget surplus. Obviously, we, we got a fair amount of money from FEMA and CARES. So how does that compare? Like, what, what is the budget surplus typical, in a typical year without those federal and county funds?
It's usually between 1 million and 1.5 million, which, if you take out the 2.9 in receivables, you're getting right around our surplus turnbacks from each, from totally from all departments.
Okay.
And that usually is about 1% of our total budget.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, any, any further questions?
No further questions. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
So are these numbers, do they include fund balances that would be associated with enterprise funds, or have they already been removed here?
No, this is general funds, fund balance only.
Okay. Do any members of the public have questions on the fund balance presentation? Seeing none, I'm going to now move to the next item on our agenda, which is the preliminary fiscal year 23 financial forecast. And Sue, I know you're still up to bat with Tom and Michelle, but I'll turn this over to Tom.
Great, thank you very much, Joe. I don't know who's driving, Michelle or Sue?
Michelle.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. All right, thank you very much, Joe. This is the annual five-year forecast. We had a meeting of the forecast group this morning. Joe as Chair, Joe Fisher as Chair was there representing the board. We have the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee were present, the Superintendent, myself, Michelle. Michelle, am I missing anyone? Oh, and Julie Straley and George Dennis, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee were there. So that is the makeup of the forecast group. We were able to go through this document this morning. Just as a reminder, and this is a, an annual reminder, this document is really intended as a revenue forecast. So this is a, that's really the, the meat and potatoes of what this document is. We do necessarily drop some anticipated use numbers into the document so we can get a sense of how far we are from a balanced budget at this time, point in time, but understanding that it's very preliminary in nature. So if you draw your attention to the boxed year, so FY 23 on this document, I will start at the top and, and work through the revenue portion, which is labeled sources on the forecast. So the tax levy, projected tax levy for FY 23 is 89 million, a little over 89 million. That's a function of the prior year's tax levy plus the two and a half percent growth rate or, or growth as well as new growth beyond that. And that, those three items in FY 22 added together give us our new levy for FY 23, to which we add a new two and a half percent increase in the tax base, as well as we are projecting, as we always do, $650,000 in new growth. We don't have any reason to change that number yet. We will get more information as that, as the, the, as we work through the budget season and refine that number as needed. So coupled with debt exclusions, we are, coupled all that with debt exclusions, we can look at the tax levy as an anticipated total amount of 95, 95,700,000.
Excuse me, Tom?
Yeah.
I can just interrupt. So just so I understand, so we're in the column that's called the Forecast Fiscal Year 2023. And the first item here, which is the 89 million, is that intended to represent a a two and a half percent increase over the 86 million?
So it's the prior year's levy plus the prior year's two and a half percent, plus the prior year's new growth.
So we're adding those three?
Those three items together make 89, 363, 478.
So then the items below there, the 2.2 and the 650, what, what are they?
That's this year's projected two and a half percent increase and projected new growth.
Got it. The which we then can use for the following year.
That's right.
Okay.
For FY 23, yeah, that's right. And then that, and those three numbers together will build the levy for FY 24.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So other revenue this year, we're anticipating, we've been told by officials at the state that we can budget with a fair amount of certainty at a minimum of level funding, state aid. There is a hope that we would be able to realize additional money this year. So I, I expect that number to go up, but until I'm told otherwise, in the state budgeting process, I think we need to be conservative here and make sure that we don't project a too big of a hole for ourselves. So we're looking at level funding, the state aid right now. We have local receipts projected right now at about a $500,000 increase over, over last year. That is, that is recognizing some anticipated recovery from the pandemic and identifying what was in fact realized during the, the last, the course of the last fiscal year. So that's good news. The fund balance line, if you remember in our, this number has not changed since the, since the forecast from last year. We were anticipating using $800,000 of ARPA money. That's some of the federal relief funds this year, and then another 400,000 next year as we wean ourselves out of what was the anticipated big use of ARPA money last year. This number may change depending on where, what we decide we want to do and how we want to fund the budget this year. The Sustainable Budgeting Task Force is working through some of those ideas right now, so I would expect a change in that number. Not sure what's going to happen with it yet. We have to let them do their work and make some recommendations. And then, and then we'll bring it back to the group. The, the next three items, Country Club, the water system and sewer are all enterprise funds. While they're listed here as revenue sources, they are mirrored in the, in the uses side, so they're in essence a wash. The light plant is a, what's called a pilot agreement. That's a payment in lieu of taxes. So we have an agreement with the light plant that they would pay the town a minimum of $450,000 a year. Traditionally, we've been realizing about 500,000 a year. It's, it's in part a formula based on their, on their revenues. So we, last year, we realized a little bit less than 5, 500,000, about 481,000, but we are projecting that they would be back up to $500,000 pilot, pilot payment this year. And then the stabilization fund is 170 grand, as it is every year. That will likely roll off the books sometime around FY 20, fiscal year 2030 or so. So that brings our total other revenue to 40 million for total anticipated annual revenue from the town, for the town of 135,891,296 dollars at this early stage. Michelle, if you scroll down a little.
Before you scroll down, I just want to ask if, if there are any questions on the revenue side, unless you prefer that we let you build the whole.
No, no, along the way, absolutely.
Okay. Liz, did you have any?
I just have a question about the state aid. Tom, do you have any idea when we might get more accurate numbers there?
Yeah, I would hope that we would get a sense from our, our state reps about where the discussion is heading. Sometime, you know, maybe around the MMA concert, concert, I think it was a concert, the MMA conference.
We're really gonna be in trouble.
In late January, sometimes it's February or March, or sometimes even later before the state actually finishes their budget. But we can get a sense of the trend and where things are headed sometime in, you know, mid to late winter.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
Questions, thank you.
I'm sorry?
No questions.
Okay, great. Tom, on, getting back to the state aid, a number of federal programs are funneled through the state. I don't know if they're included in the state aid. So are, and are any of the federal projects, I'm thinking of like the, the new infrastructure funding and other aid that's been, has been or will be approved by Congress, is any of that in the revenue numbers currently?
Thank you. Yes, that, that is projected to be coming through state programs, but I'll let Michelle speak to it.
No, Joe, none of the federal funds are projected in this number that you're seeing so far from the preliminary information that we've reviewed that's come out so far. It looks like we'll need to apply for specific grant programs to access that fund, those funds. For the most part, it doesn't seem like they've set it up similar to the American Rescue Plan, where the town might expect to receive a direct allocation. So it's something that we'll have to keep track of and, and apply individually over the next few years through existing grant programs and through new ones that will be set up. Can I just make two quick comments, though, on state aid and local receipts? The FY 23 number, like Tom said, is level funded from '22. It looks much lower than the '21 actual because FY 21 was the last year in which the town received MSBA funding for the old middle school.
Right.
So that, that has now come out in '22 and '23, so it's not, it sort of looks like it's artificially dropping, but that's the reason why the, the last year of funding for that was '21 and the last year of payments in the expenditures line below for that project was also FY 21. And then similarly, local receipts also looks quite large in FY 21 compared to where we're projecting it now. But in FY 21, in that number, the 11.6 million is 1.5 million from the water enterprise transfer back to the general fund that's captured in there. So that's also sort of making that look bigger than, than it really was. I just wanted to point that out, so.
So just picking up on that, and then I want to continue, and then I see Bill has some follow-up questions. So on the MSBA funds, to the extent that we have, that we do receive MSP funds for the foster school project, where would that appear? Would that appear in the state aid line?
Yes.
I can answer that. Actually, now, that used to be the old MSBA program. That's why it's been state aid. The new MSBA is pay-as-you-go. We, we pay for the project and then get reimbursed by the MSBA.
So.
So it will not be in local, it will not be in state aid. It will be right in the capital project fund itself.
Okay, okay. And you mentioned that the light plant has payments in lieu of taxes. What about the Weir River Water System?
They pay taxes. They pay tax bills.
Okay. So that where is that tax revenue?
They'll be in the tax levy.
I'm sorry, what?
It's, it's in the tax levy.
Oh, oh, it's up there? Okay, okay, got it. Bill, I think you had a follow-up, yeah, please, go ahead.
Under other revenue, Tom, the, the, the excess overlay and water waste fund that seems to be, that we're losing out here, on what are those sources?
So that, the excess overlay, that's an annual, not annually, well, it's an annual assessment of the existing overlay account. The overlay's account is, is used by the Board of Assessors to pay for abatements, so tax abatements. So when we get requests for abatements, they have a lot of money that's funded every year that they can use to pay off those tax, those tax abatements. The, but they don't often use the entire amount every year, so that number, that, that bank, if you will, that account grows and every, you know, one, two, three years, as, as that account gets larger than they need, the assessor often will, will work with me, will, will talk about where things are. The Board of Assessors will work with the assessor and kind of determine how much is a, is a reasonable amount to release back out into the budget, out of that account. So if, if they don't think they're going to need that full amount. So it's possible, we, we released $225,000 last year out of that account. It's possible there would be some this year. I would remind everyone, we did not use the full means-tested senior abatement allocation that was designated last year. We did not use that amount last year, so I think Aaron and myself and, and certainly working with the Board of Assessors will, will attempt to identify how, what's an appropriate amount of that money to release here, which would be relief in the, in the budget process.
Okay.
So Tom is, oh, sorry, Bill.
And the, and the water waste fund?
Waterways fund, Sue.
That, that is, that is money when the harbor master uses, asks for capital. The capital, the capital amount comes out of the water waste fund.
Got it. So that's also a wash then. So the revenue on the top from the water waste fund is supporting the capital requests that are included in the uses on the bottom.
So what does the money come from? Does it come from user fees of the harbor?
Yes, it comes from mooring permits and, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, but Michelle, so when it's a wash, we typically are showing the number in revenue and we're showing the number expense in uses. In this case, we've got a zero, so I'm assuming we'll have the zero also in the in the uses?
Well, we don't know what capital is yet.
I was talking about the water for the waterways. So there's a zero on both sides right now.
Right now, yes.
Right now.
Great. So then let's turn to uses.
So on the uses side, again, these are preliminary numbers. We on the municipal sector as well as the school, the school board and the school department are still working out details of the of their anticipated budgets. However, we had to start somewhere. So where the Article Six number is inclusive of what we know at this point. And that's in large part what drives the use, or excuse me, the total uses anticipated. Articles four and five are the anticipated wage increases for the for the municipal employees in town. That's bringing us to a total deficit, anticipated deficit as of now of 7.2 million. I would remind us all, we're usually in the ballpark of two-ish million in the hole at this point in the game. This number of 7.2 is quite large, but that is inclusive of the $5 million we used of one-time money last year to to bridge the gap and fund the budget. We did that eyes wide open, knowing that it was going to cause this hole this year. It certainly has. And now we need to decide how we're going to deal with that hole in this fiscal year. So in large, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force is working that that through. That's one of the one of the hottest items, I believe, that they're working out. Liz and Michelle and Ness and all the all the rest. So it'll be interesting to see some of the recommendations that come out of that group. But that, the 5 million from last year's, the 5 million of one-time money from last year's allocation of one of fund balance was in large part what's driving that 7.2 million dollar deficit.
Tom, can you explain again the line that says Article Four and Five? What is that?
So Article Four and Five, that is the that is the non-union personnel. It's also any personnel who are a part of a union that has not yet settled. Who's who's but who's who's budget, budgetary growth is not included in their budget requests.
So.
It's an anticipated 3% increase, I believe. Here it says 2%. That number should be three.
So why was it, why was it zero? In the, why is it zero in the first column?
Because it's already been used. It was already distributed into all the department salary budgets.
So it's approved separately through town meeting and then during the course of the year, Sue takes that money and and divides it up between all the different departments. So the actual is recorded in each department's salary line.
So this row actually will change each year based on town meeting activity.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Unlike other rows, which are basically, you can look backwards and forwards. This one you can't.
Exactly.
Okay. Great, I'm sorry. Did Bill or Liz give any further questions on this?
Just a clarification on that. So the Article Four and Five there, the 3% increase. So that includes all of the wage reclassification that has been done, right?
That's right, exactly.
That's built into that line.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And any of the collective bargain agreements that are already done and in the budgets with from those departments, i.e. the the fire department or the now the library, I believe you guys just finalized the other day. A couple of those collective bargain agreements, those numbers are now being built into the budgetary requests and will represent in Article Six, not in Article Four and Five, as as we move through the budget process.
And as as we refine it, that that amount will go down.
Right.
Well, to move from that line to Article Six, right?
Yeah, nine out of six will go up.
Oh, Liz is learning.
That's right. Okay, what's next?
That's what I wanted to to present. You know, it's it's still early in the fiscal, in the, excuse me, in the budget season. There's a lot to do. The Liz and Michelle and her team and the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force are evaluating all of this. And again, we'll be making some recommendations. But Michelle, if you'd like to speak briefly on any of that.
Sure, I think I just want to point out, I think everyone knows this. That is a much larger deficit number than we are usually looking at at this point in the budget process. We usually start the budget process with some sort of deficit. And as we refine the numbers over the next few months, we get more information about revenue. We kind of whittle down some of the department requests and prioritize them. We're usually able to close the gap. But, you know, we collectively decided, as Tom said, to do quite a big increase in FY twenty two. And the group that Liz is chairing and that I'm part of with four other staff and residents are are looking at this. We're trying to solve the problem, but we are exploring many solutions. There is not going to be a magic bullet or a magic answer that's going to make this go away easily, but it's allowed us to focus on potential solutions and explore some ideas in a way that I don't think the town necessarily would have been able to to focus on. So we are working many different angles. We're hoping to offer a number of options for the community to consider. And there's some creative thinking going on there. So I hope people know that we're working hard. We're trying to think outside the box and pursue many different ways to kind of tackle this challenge.
Yes. I'm aware of some, but not all. I know, Michelle, you, Liz, others are on the committee are certainly doing their best to address this. And I'm glad that you had the chance to present this so that hopefully the next time we'll be seeing a rosier picture as you come up with some creative solutions. Are there any members of the public who have questions on what has been presented, which is the preliminary fiscal year twenty three financial forecast? Seeing none. Sue, thank you. Tom, thank you. Michelle, thank you. We can now move to the fiscal year twenty three department budget requests. And these are broken down department by department. We covered, I think, five or six departments at our last meeting. And I know there's there's lots to go and we are going to start this evening with Town Accountant Reserve Fund, Debt Service, Employee Benefits, General Insurance, and again, Sue is
It's it's the Sue hour.
It totally is.
And I get to do this in advisory in 20 minutes. I don't know exactly how we we're going about this. My department request for for salaries is 310, 310,00110. My expenses is 11,355. The audit is 75,500 for a total request of 396,965. The Town Accountant's Office manages the weekly payroll, accounts payable for the town school and Shrek. We also handle the retirement office. I am the liaison to the Audit Committee, the Advisory Committee. We coordinate the yearly audit and we prepare and submit our yearly used to be the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. As of now, it is called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report or ACFA. And I would love to, really like to boost that FY twenty was our 25th consecutive year of getting our certificate of award for financial reporting. We assist in the appropriation of the town's yearly budget. We submit all the required forms to the government agencies. And we also manage workers' comp and unemployment. Next screen. And these are just some of the benchmarks and and metrics, the IRS, the Department of Revenue, unemployment, PARAC for retirement, and the ACFA. And just to let you know, there are only three municipalities with more awards than Hangon. Next slide. Our key initiatives are to implement some municipal upgrades and improvements. Train new staff. I just want to, you know, let you know that I have two brand new employees. One is our brand new Assistant Town Accountant that we we upgraded when my staff accountant retired. And our our retirement administrator is brand new too. We do long-term capital planning. We're trying to implement some additional paperless processing. We review the accounting retention records. And we provide staff support for Advisory Committee and the Audit Committee. And our salaries are 310, 110, five, five, five full-time personnel. Myself, the Town Accountant, I have an Assistant Town Accountant, a Payroll Administrator, an Accounts Payable Specialist, and a Retired Administrator Assistant, which is funded by retirement. The expenses, the major items and expenses, $5,000 for conferences and training. And I believe that is it for the Town Accountant's Office. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm going to start. I'm noticing that for fiscal, well, there was a drop in the department head salary going from fiscal year twenty one to twenty two, staying lower in twenty three. Did you, did you take a pay cut?
No, actually, twenty one, my contract was a little behind, so there was a retro in that.
Okay.
And that's, and that's why it was higher.
Okay, and and we had the actually the reverse effect wages full-time fiscal year twenty one to twenty two. There's, there was a $15,000 increase. And then it's basically level after that.
Yeah, twenty one, that is when my staff, staff accountant retired and I was without help or
Got it. Yeah, because I see it twenty one was was lower than twenty, so that's, yep. But just, you know, we don't say it enough, but we appreciate, we being not only the board and staff, but the town itself really appreciates everything you've done. And it's, it's it's remarkable that for the budget of our size and the work that has to be done, that you were doing it so efficiently. So we do appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I have a great team.
Yes. Liz, any questions?
You're on mute. Oh, no, sorry, Sue. Thank you for putting this together and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Keep things running. What what sorts of training? Is it new training or new technology or?
For the new staff?
The $5,000 that you referenced?
Yes, that's going to be for new staff. It also includes money for my advisory team when they go to the MMA conferences or any other training that they do.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
I echo Jeff's thanks. And not only do you do a fabulous job running your own department, your steward, financial stewardship of the town has been wonderful. And, you know, I also know that you help out other, other other town boards and departments, you know, your help of the house, of the Housing Trust last year and you do it all the time. So thanks so much for all your assistance in so many different areas. Can't thank you enough.
You're very welcome.
Are there any members of the public with questions on this presentation? Tom, Michelle, or Art?
I can make, I have a comment, but I can make it at the end of all of her presentations. She's got about four more.
Let's see here. I don't, oh, yeah, okay, go ahead. Yes, okay. So let's go to the next one then.
You want to go in order?
Yeah, please.
Okay, the Conservatory Retirement is straight from our actuarially service valuation. So this year for FY twenty three, of course, I didn't have it in that order, is And this is to fund our retirement system for past and present, and hopefully we will be fully funded in 2035. Anybody have any questions on retirement?
If you could comment briefly on how we compare with other towns, because I think we're doing quite well in terms of fully funding our obligations.
Yes, right now, we're about 72% fully funded. And yes, we are one of the the several that are are up above 70%.
Great. Liz?
So, sorry, Sue, maybe you said this, but when, when do you expect that to be fully funded?
2035.
2035. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Any concerns about that, Sue, going forward? I know other towns have kind of defaulted on their on their obligations, but you seem to do a really good job with it. I mean, looking forward, any, you have any concerns about our ability to fulfill those promises?
No, I do not.
Okay, great.
I happen to be Chair of the Retirement Board, so.
Yes. Any member of the public questions? I am seeing none. So let's move forward.
Debt service, these are basically these are our funds and and budgets that we have to pay. We have no choice. So our debt service is to pay the debt in interest, principal and interest payments on any town debt obligation. The principal budget will be 4,184,460. Interest will be 1,401,831. And the category that we have had for a few years is the unused, non-excluded debt capacity. And for FY twenty three, it will be 249,040. This is straight from our debt service debt schedule. Does anybody have any questions?
What's our vulnerability to interest rate rises?
These are long-term debt. We're, we already have.
We're locked in.
Yeah, we're locked in.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Any member of the public? Then let's move on.
The general insurance is for property and liability insurance. This is just a placeholder for right now. I have 1,114,464, which basically what I do for right now is the the premium that we paid for FY twenty two, I added 10%. This is what we usually do for our forecast for most of these until we get firm enough numbers going forward. I do not think this will come down, but it possibly could.
Sue, how often do we get competitive bids on our insurance?
I'm going to turn that one over to Michelle. Because I think they might want to. We don't have to. Legally, we don't have to bid out for property general group insurance. But we could if we wanted to.
And Joe, I'm not sure the last time we did that, but it is something we're considering for the next cycle.
Right, right. Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
No question.
Any member of the public? Let's move on.
Group insurance, this is to pay for active and retired employees for health insurance and life insurance. My department request is 7,119,766. And what that is, is 10% over our actuals of FY twenty one. I will not know what the GIC rates will be until the first of March. So this will hopefully go down. I'm anticipating not a 10% increase, but I really don't know quite yet what the GIC is is planning on doing.
Liz, any questions?
Do you also, in that 10%, do you estimate if there'll be more people adding on or taking our insurance package? Is that part of it?
What I do, once I get the rates, I basically will do a deep dive on how many people are on every plan and then cost it out. And then, yes, I do add a migration amount for that purpose.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions.
Any member of the public? Seeing none. Let's go to Medicare.
All right, Medicare. I have $1,061,995. What that is, is to pay the employer's share of the mandated Medicare employment tax, and that is 1.45% of total salaries. Does anybody have any questions on that?
So this is a formula based on compensation?
Right now, it is 10% over FY '21's actuals. What, as the budget process goes a little bit further, then I can take actual total salaries and multiply it by 1.45% and come up with an actual.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
None.
Members of the public? Let's go to other post-employment benefits.
Other post-employment benefits or OPEB, that is to budget money for future health insurance for retirees. And that comes right from the actual evaluation that we have every other year for OPEB. And FY '23, right off the schedule, is $1,289,173. And we will be fully funded with OPEB in 2040.
And this is to fund the commitment that we've made to our employees?
Yes.
Yes. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
None.
Members of the public? I am seeing none. Reserve fund?
Yeah, the reserve fund is to budget for unforeseen expenses that arise during the fiscal year. The advisory's financial policy recommends 0.75% of our operating budget. And what I did is I took FY '21's operating budget and multiplied by 0.75% because that would be actuals. So FY '23's department request would be $709,291.
I'm sorry, what was that number again?
$709,291.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
And that fund can be used for what, Sue?
Any unforeseen or unexpected expenses that arise during the fiscal year. We use that for snow and ice at the end of the year or any emergency that comes up that is not budgeted for.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
Historically, has it been primarily used as snow and ice?
Yes, snow and ice legal.
Legal, yeah, okay, thanks.
They're both disasters.
Workers' comp. Workers' comp is going to be level funded at $330,000. Workers' comp is payment for job-related injuries, and we are self-insured for workers' comp. And what we do is we take this $330,000 and we transfer it into the workers' comp trust fund, and we pay for all our job-related injuries. If we do not use all of it, it stays in that trust for the next year. Last year, I think, was the first year in a long time that we haven't come to the select board or advisory for a reserve fund transfer. So hopefully, we do have some high-cost job-related injuries right now, so I might be coming back. I don't know.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Members of the public on workers' comp or the reserve fund? Seeing none, we go to unemployment.
My last one, unemployment. We're level funding it at $30,000. This is, we pay dollar-for-dollar for unemployment. And $30,000 is usually what we start with. We have not seen anything that would justify increasing it right now.
Do we not calculate this as a, based on the number of employees or based on the compensation, so that, again, it would be a formula?
No, we do not, only because if we did that, it would be, it would rival group insurance. Because we would have to pay, we would have to take a percentage of the whole total salary of the town.
But we've got sufficient funds there to cover what's needed?
Yes.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
None.
Members of the public? Now is the time for applause, Sue. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I know you've got another meeting to run to.
I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
So with that, we will turn to elder services, and we have Jennifer Young here, I believe.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hi, Jennifer.
It's nice to see you all, members of the select board and everyone at home. So I'm Jennifer Young, Director of Elder Services and the Hingham Senior Center. We operate a 5,000-square-foot full-time center for older adults with transportation services, volunteer opportunities, tax work-off, support groups, education, and so much more. We provide in-person, remote, and hybrid programs to meet the needs and interests of seniors across abilities and age groups. We connect seniors and family members to services and resources to support independent living in our own community, such as subsidized assistance programs, referrals to aging services providers, and other community partners. So the senior center is a very unique department for municipality where participants come in, not because they have to pay a bill or pull a permit. They want to come in and spend time with us, with their friends, socializing, taking some classes, and enjoying a meal with others. And for some of our seniors, this is the only meal that they may eat in the company of others. So we're very happy to do what it is we do here. And how have we been doing? This is where we get to our benchmarks and metrics. So the pandemic did not slow us down or reduce our programs or participation. It shifted the way seniors connect with us, with each other, and the way that we do business. So we are very, very busy here at the senior center. Through November 10th of this fiscal year, we served 398 seniors through information and referral outreach and program attendance. While the town reopened to the public in July, it took us a little while longer to get some of the programs running. So I just want to make mention of that, as well as transportation, as we look at our metrics. We provided 51 individuals with rides to 274 medical appointments. We've taken 36 seniors to the senior center for programs, shopping, or out-to-run errands 552 times. Our transportation service is bustling. We have offered 50 in-person programs and 20 Zoom or hybrid programs, which have repeated almost 1,300 times. So that brings us to our key initiatives and how we're going to move forward. Our major upcoming key initiative is a community-wide needs assessment in partnership with UMass Gerontology Institute and the Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies. That's a mouthful. We will conduct a study focusing on the needs and interests of Hingham's older adult population as they shape the planning and development of the Council on Aging and Senior Center. So this is an update to the 2013 study that was done with Barbara Farnsworth. And that information is located on our webpage if anybody wants to read up prior to our next assessment. So this study is slated to begin in January, next month. We're very excited. And conclude with formal presentations in the fall of 2022, so about 10 months. The senior center building committee meets monthly, and the results of the UMass needs assessment will be used as part of the site design for the construction of renovations of our current senior center facility here at Town Hall. We are due to review and revise our five-year strategic plan. And again, largely, this plan will be driven by the results of the needs assessment. So what are our seniors' needs, and how can we meet them? This is our guiding tool. The Council on Aging Board is exploring community interest in rebranding away from the term senior center to a more descriptive title such as a center for active living. And this is in an effort to attract residents who are 60 years and older who don't identify as being a senior. And I know that there's a lot of that in the community, and we see that across the state as well. We will increase community partnerships through outreach. We need to foster and leverage community support to help broaden our perspective on programming. So we here at the center feel pretty well-versed in what we think people might want, but it's really the folks out in the community that are going to tell us what they're interested in. So that's where really fostering those relationships is important to us. And it will help us with increasing our variety of programming. So I mentioned we catered to residents 60 to over 100 years old. And that's over 40 years of a range of interests that we're trying to program for. And we want to be attractive to all of our residents over the age of 60. So how can we do this? This brings us to our salary and expense line. There we go. Our department's requesting a salary budget of $286,334 to support three full-time personnel, including myself as the director, one outreach coordinator, one administrative assistant, and our four-time personnel, which includes an office assistant at 12 hours a week and three part-time directors. Our transportation program salaries include $54,534 for two part-time positions, transportation coordinator and dispatcher. And both of those are fully funded through a state grant. Our volunteers, who are our unpaid, you know, staff members here, have had a slow return with us here at the senior center to in-person services. But we've had 84 volunteers who have given us over 255 hours since we reopened. And just for comparison, in 2019, before, you know, that was the last full year before the pandemic, we had over 120 volunteers that gave us 8,732 hours of their time, which is the equivalent of almost five full-time employees. So we really are striving at reintroducing our volunteers in innovative ways, both at the center, remote, and out in the community. And of our expense line of $26,400, the majority of that $18,000 and change goes towards our transportation program. And that about covers what I have to say. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jennifer, can you just comment briefly on what activities and what efforts you've been involved with in supporting seniors through COVID, namely outreach, making sure that they're aware of what's available, booster shots that are available, and also providing transportation?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. I tend to focus a lot on the numbers when it comes to this presentation, but the full story is that, you know, a year ago, when vaccines were released, our staff spent hours and hours up at 1:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning helping our seniors to book vaccination appointments. One, because there was a frenzy involved in it for them and a huge fear. But also, that anxiety just increased, you know, their fear around making sure that when they were on the internet, that they didn't timeout, that they had all the information in front of them. They, gosh, our staff booked well over 300 vaccination appointments in the first round. And we continue to do so. We still have a COVID hotline number. Don't have the number in front of me, but I can get it for everybody later. Where if somebody does need assistance with booking an appointment, whether it just be that you're not comfortable with doing it, we would be happy to help folks and walk them through the process and book the appointments for them. In regards to transportation, the program was shut down until the end of July. We were providing very limited services for folks on reoccurring medical needs such as dialysis or PT. And it still remains well-visit transportation only. We don't transport people for COVID tests, or, you know, if they're not feeling well, you have to be completely well to use our services. But we have been absolutely bustling. And what we've seen is that the need for those services has dramatically increased. Out of the folks that have been generally attending with us, I'm sure it has to do with the fact of not wanting to necessarily get out into the community in a large group setting, so they can just pop on our van, and we can get them where they need to go and come right back. The numbers are increasing, and we're looking for volunteers, if anybody is looking to drive our shuttle vans. I'll put the plug out there right now. In terms of programs, we went from zero online programs to, as I mentioned, you know, 20 Zoom classes that repeat. So that's fitness, it's education. We ran a Zoom cooking class. We have another one that's starting next week that's hybrid. So folks can log in from home or come in. We're really trying to meet the needs of everybody's comfort level, as well as all of our instructors. We're giving them the flexibility as well, because we want to grow in diversity with the programs that we offer. We don't want to lose our participants or instructors. So the staff has been incredible. I can't thank them enough for everything they've done.
And I do know that you have, there's a hotline for the Hingham Food Pantry and a hotline for home-delivered meals that you make sure folks are aware of. So we really do appreciate your expanded efforts here. Liz, any questions or comments?
No questions. Just, Jennifer, thank you. You've done a phenomenal job at the senior center and specifically over this past year, adapting and meeting the needs of our seniors. So we're very grateful.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
And Liz, it's no longer seniors. It's what, active?
Active adults, I like it.
Bill?
Jennifer, I'm glad that the study is kicking off in January. I think the study will help the building committee identify the needs of what will become the new center. I think that's great. You know, you did a great job with the pandemic kicked off, really transitioning online resources. And that was really built on. And have you seen, has the center come back to life in terms of in-person learning and classes, or have you stayed remote with Zoom? It seems like, you know, one step forward with this pandemic and then one step back with new variants. Have you kind of done a hybrid? Where are we today with what's off at the center?
So that's a really good question. And what we really tried to do is introduce a remote or hybrid component to all of our programs, with the exception of games. I haven't figured out how people can play games remotely and in person, so if anybody knows, let me know. But even this, you know, upcoming discovery classes, we were doing them solely through Zoom. And some of our folks have said, you know, even with the mask mandate, I just want to sit in a room with somebody else. And so you know what? We have the technology, you know, through the help of the IT department and, you know, a lot of labor, we were able to bring in some new flat-screen TVs with cameras and audio equipment. We have tablets. So we have really tried every possible solution we can to all the scenarios that are out there. And as I mentioned, the only programs we really can't do with a remote option are playing games. So we have about a, I would say, 25% to 30% return to in-person for our participants, but everyone else is still participating remotely at home. You know, when the mask mandate shifts at some point, who knows when it'll be? I think we will see more folks want to return in person, but I have heard also from a large percentage of people that they actually prefer working out in the comfort of their own home. So it's nice to have both options.
Well, thanks for all you do, Jennifer.
Of course, thank you.
Jennifer, just one other question. Every few weeks, we read reports about Every few weeks, we read reports about cybercrimes and fraud being perpetrated, particularly aimed at seniors. Is there any educational program or outreach that you do to help prevent that for our residents?
That's a greatly timed question, actually. We do work with the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department and the District Attorney's Office to promote the information regarding what's trending for scams. I've done some shows on Harbor Media with the DA. Last year, we, actually this time last year, we did one on romance scams, which during the course of the pandemic definitely increased from folks feeling isolated and putting themselves out there online. I have been sharing information as recently as yesterday with the Police Department, Harbor Media, you know, and the other media outlets. There is a, what would we call it, a lobbying organization out of Washington called The Senior Center. And a Hingham resident brought in a check written out to this organization, but brought it here thinking it was intended for us. So we were able to get the word out to the community that, in fact, if you've received this information, it's not from the Hingham Senior Center. It's very real. I think we need to talk about it more here in this community, and I'd be happy to do so.
Great, thank you. Members of the public, comments or questions on elder services? Seeing none, we thank you, Jennifer. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the fiscal year '23 budget request for conservation. And I believe we have Emily Sullivan here.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to meet you. My name is Emily Sullivan. I'm the new Conservation Officer here. And so tonight, I'll present the budget. So Michelle, if you could move to the next slide, thank you so much. So the Conservation Office is primarily, primarily supports the Conservation Commission in the administration of the State's Wetland Protection Act, the Rivers Protection Act, in the Hingham Wetlands Protection Byline Regulations. And that really looks like permitting and inspections. The department also responds to a lot of public inquiries. We get phone calls from current residents, prospective residents, real estate agents about private properties and conservation jurisdiction. We also get public inquiries about conservation land. The Conservation Commission is a large property owner and manager. And so the office, on behalf of the commission, manages that property. The Conservation Office also manages the commission's hunting program. There are two hunting seasons, a fall deer hunting season and a spring turkey season. So the office manages all the day-to-day permitting requirements and just communication for the hunting program. The Conservation Office is also charged with implementing the Open Space and Recreation Plan, as well as the Master Trials Plan from 2015. And then finally, the Conservation Office coordinates with a bunch of different stakeholders, federal, state, local permitting boards, environmental nonprofits like watershed associations, including, you know, the Straits Pond Water Association, things like that. And so the primary function, like I said, of the office is to do permitting support and inspections. But there's also some additional project work that the office manages. Looking at the Conservation Office's metrics, we usually measure things in how many permit applications we've received. And then that translates to revenue that we receive from filing fees. The, this department, it's a really heavy permitting department, so we do get a large volume of permits. We also get a variety of permits, which is why, you know, the type of permit doesn't, really impacts the amount of revenue and the filing fee for that permit. So it's based on scope and type of permit. So for example, we have an administrative review permit that's a $30 fee, but a notice of intent, which is a more complicated permit, could be hundreds or thousands of dollars, depending on the scope of the project and the resource area that the project is proposed in. Key initiatives for fiscal year '23 include managing properties and identifying property improvements. As I mentioned, the commission is a large property owner, a lot of well-used properties in town. And we've definitely seen a spike in usership over the pandemic. So it's a good opportunity to take stock of what properties look like and identify if anything needs to be managed differently. Some of our properties are what's called a conservation restriction. So that's special protection for a property so that it's conserved in perpetuity. The commission has conservation restrictions and sometimes manages those conservation restrictions, or those are managed by other entities such as the Hingham Land Conservation Trust or the trustees. So we want to make sure that we're continuing to manage those conservation restrictions as they're needed to be managed. We're also, you know, bolstering partnerships with local organizations, groups, and volunteers. Hingham has a strong history of conservation. There's a ton of conservation land. There's been a lot of involvement from the community in conservation efforts. And so we want to continue to engage those folks, but also look to engage maybe some folks we haven't engaged before in these efforts. Most recently, this fall has, we lost a member of the Conservation Commission because they moved out of town. We were down. We've spent a lot of time and effort trying to reach back out to former commissioners to try to get the commission fully at full capacity. We're at six out of seven members right now, but we're still looking for our seventh member. But so we want to use efforts to bolster existing and new partnerships to garner more engagement with the commission. And finally, we are looking to revise the wetland regulations. This is particularly true for climate change considerations. We've started this process a little bit this fall. We did some regulation update in September and October. And a lot of, or most of the commission has expressed an interest in looking at climate change more holistically and incorporating those considerations into the regulations as it relates to flooding, sea level rise, increased precipitation, extreme heat, things like that. I think there's a lot of good energy that's been put into the climate change impact analysis through some of the work that the Hingham Harbor Committee has done. And so looking to maybe take some of that energy and direct it towards our regulation update. And so this, or for fiscal year 2023, we are requesting a total budget of $212,406. So what that breaks down to is salaries and expenses. We have two full-time staff in the Conservation Office and one part-time staff. The part-time staff person works 24 hours a week. And most of the budget request goes towards salaries. The expenses that we're requesting, most of that funding would be allocated towards major items like property maintenance and then consultant services. This is something that has historically been used to fund special projects in the Conservation Office, such as the Ford Stewardship Plan. Also, there's conversations about the laner property in designing a parking lot area or redesigning the current parking lot. So that's the type of projects that those funds are usually allocated towards. And additionally, expenses go to things like normal office management, like supplies, postage, mileage, things like that. The fiscal year '23 budget is actually less than the fiscal year '22 budget request, just given salary differences. As a new staff person, me, my salary just happens to be lower than the former Conservation Officer. So although this is a level service request, the budget is slightly lower.
Thank you. You actually answered my question about the budget that I was about to ask about why it's lower. Can you comment briefly on to what extent you've been involved with implementation of the commission's tree removal and replacement policy? I know that, I think that was adopted in 2019 as a method to make sure, not as a method, as a goal and as policy for the Conservation Office to manage tree removal and replacement?
Absolutely, yeah. So that policy, the goal of that policy is to protect trees within resource areas. But also acknowledge that sometimes if trees do have to come down, that that's an opportunity for replacement of trees. And so that was implemented or adopted, I believe, in 2019, like you said. And so every time we get a permit application that calls for the removal of trees, we respond to that applicant with that policy and let them know that the Conservation Commission has expectation that trees will be replaced per the policy. And so far, it's worked out well. Applicants have responded well to it, so that's really encouraging. I think people are understanding of the value of trees, so that's been great. We also, the Commission just this fall also adopted a, what's called a buffer zone mitigation policy. So I know trees are a really big topic, but other types of plants like shrubs, grasses, those are also important to resource area values. And so that policy, similar to the tree replacement policy, has a goal of just protecting the vegetation in our resource areas. So we just adopted that one. And so where we've been implementing it, and it's gone well so far. I think it makes the permitting process easier for applicants to understand, just because they have an understanding of the commission's expectations. And so it just, it better defines the permitting parameters for applicants.
Great. You also mentioned that you're out looking for another commissioner. That's actually this board's job. And so if, to the extent you get recommendations, please forward it on. We have done interviews, and we will continue to do interviews. And our goal is to, in fact, get that one slot filled. So thanks for highlighting that, and our board will do its best to make sure that the job is filled.
Wonderful, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Emily. It's a great report.
Yes. Bill? Where are you, Bill? He's off my screen. Tom, have we lost Bill?
I might have lost him. I do not see him.
I wonder if he dropped. I don't see him in there, although I just heard.
There he is.
There he is.
Bill?
I can't see him.
You're muted. I do see him.
Yeah, I'm back. Sorry. My connectivity was disrupted there.
That's okay. We just appointed you to the Conservation Commission as well. Is that okay?
Come on in. Love ConCom.
Yeah, and I spent seven years on the Conservation Commission. So it's, I think it's such a huge resource for the town. I don't know what percent of the town falls within ConCom jurisdiction. We've had some major storms that I felt like 90% of the town was wetlands. But Bill, did you have any questions on Emily's report?
No questions. I'm familiar with what ConCom does, and thank you.
Any member of the public? Questions? Emily, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Look forward to seeing you on various occasions. Thanks. Moving now to Michelle presenting on Town Meeting.
All right, thank you. This is a one-slide budget report. So our FY '23 Town Meeting budget request is about $46,000. Every year, we budget just for the annual town meeting, to the extent that we might choose to hold a special town meeting, that would be something we would pay for out of the reserve fund that Sue talked about a couple minutes ago. The '23 budget request for Town Meeting includes, as it always does, custodial support and checkers at the registration desk for Town Meeting, printing of over 10,000 warrants. Oh, sorry, this side is a little bit old. That was for the last one. But 10,000 warrants for the annual town meeting, not a special town meeting. Postage to mail the warrants to over 10,000 households. Now, that has increased from about 9,600 households to 10,300 households. And that's something that Sharon Profetti in our office always organizes each year. There's also equipment rental and setup for the chairs, the audio system, porta potties if we're doing an outdoor one, et cetera. And then there's a line item in there called Town Meeting Services, and that is for the stenographer that attends each town meeting.
Michelle, is there a material difference in the cost of holding a town meeting outside versus inside?
There were some differences. I mean, things like porta potties, we wouldn't normally need indoors. And the audio system that we used for the three outdoor town meetings held during the pandemic was more extensive and expensive than the setup that we would typically do inside. But sometimes it varies, because the last indoor town meeting we did in 2019, when the water company acquisition was on the warrant, that was a large two-night town meeting. That was quite expensive, and we also needed additional audio support for the multiple rooms that that was set up in. So it varies.
And are those extra expenses for outdoor meetings covered by COVID, any COVID-related funds?
Yes, we did get a fair amount of reimbursement through the CARES Act for many of the outdoor town meeting expenses for the three we did during the pandemic. There's some things that we couldn't get reimbursed for altogether, because, for example, something like chairs or something like warrants, we're not, COVID wasn't the reason we were having the town meeting. It was the reason we had it in a different location, but we tried to maximize our reimbursements for that to the extent possible.
Great, thank you. Liz, any questions?
So Michelle, if we had to do another outdoor town meeting, would that be covered in this budget, or do you think it would be applicable to more state or federal funding?
If there's still state, so this is for, if we're talking about the annual town meeting, this would be for the spring of 2023, so not this coming spring, but yet another year later. So we had budgeted for more of a normal indoor town meeting, but to the extent that there is still federal funding that could be used for that purpose. And I do believe that ARPA will still be applicable at that time. We would look at using reimbursements that way as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
No questions, thank you.
Any member of the public, questions? Seeing none, Michelle, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we move on to the Health Department and Susan Sarnie. Where is Susan? There you are.
Good evening.
Hi. So if you could, oh, there we go. You got it up on the screen already. Great.
So the Health Department is tasked to prevent public health issues within our communities, such as food, water testing, tobacco. We just finished, well, we're still working on COVID issues, communicable disease. COVID's not our only communicable disease we have in Hingham. There's other issues that happen throughout the year. The Board of Health also works in permitting septic systems, private well construction, building permits, and other issues that come up, such as housing. We were able to finally hire a new social worker, so we're working collaboratively with the other departments on things like that. We also do camp inspections throughout the summer, foodborne illness, any foodborne complaints. We have about 156 food establishments. And did I mention tobacco law enforcement? Next slide. Here's a scale of all our permits that we do. We do have residential pool regulations. Like I said, well, 35% of the town is on septic. And 65, I mean, 65% of the town is on septic. 35% is on sewer, so we issue all the septic permits for those residents. We issue farmers' market permits. We have fog regulations, fats, oils, and greases for those food establishments and establishments in the downtown area, and we work with the sewer department on that. Wastewater treatment plants, those are any septic systems that have different kind of technology that we need to permit per the state requirement. And then we do an extensive amount of building permits. Next slide.
Don't go to the next slide. Go back one second. Go back. What's the top item here? Frozen dessert?
Frozen dessert.
Tell us, what is that?
It's when a food establishment makes their own ice cream and they add product into the ice cream. For example, known as adds different kinds of items into their frozen dessert. Different kinds of items into their frozen dessert.
Do you have to sample it to make sure it's okay?
No.
Okay, next slide.
Some key initiatives, of course, is to stop the spread of COVID, and we're going through a little surge right now. Educate the citizens. We work a lot with the schools, the public schools, both. More extensively than the private schools on COVID nineteen and all the new D E C regulations. We assist. All the departments in enforcing some of our regulations. We just had a meeting with elder services and veterans. On how we can incorporate the social worker into needs in their department. We were able to secure a grant last year from the state to cover some of our COVID expenses. The board is looking at. Revising the well regulations. They just revised the septic regulations for the town of Hingham last year. And I already mentioned mentioned the social worker. Next slide. Here's a brief description of the personnel for the Health Department. There's three for full time personnel, myself. An admin and a health agent, and then we have three part time, a public health nurse, a food inspector and a social worker. And then we have eighteen thousand roughly for expenses for meetings and seminars for the entire staff, state travel. And water testing for our public in association beaches in Hingham. Next slide. And then the additional request would be for ninety three hundred for additional flu vaccine. For an annual flu clinic, perhaps next year. That's it.
Susan, thank you. I don't, did you cover, and I don't know if there's an issue here, enforcement of the state lead poisoning regulations and whether or not that's that. Has been an issue in Hingham?
We no longer covered lead poisoning for six and under. The state took over that program probably, I think, like six years ago.
Okay. I'd seen it in prior reports, but I did not see it here.
Yeah.
Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Susan. I know you've been hard at work twenty four seven. Almost two years now with COVID, so thank you. Can you just talk a little bit about the flu vaccine doses? How is that different from previous years?
In my current budget, I believe it's a hundred doses that we have of just the standard flu. We're finding that our seniors are requiring, I'm gonna call it a high test for just conversation. There's different kinds of flu doses. The seniors really want that high test. So this number. Has in it the more of the high test, so a hundred and fifty doses that, and it's almost three times the amount. Of what the regular flu is. The good news is, this is a possible ask, but we're part of UMass billing. So when a resident fills in their flu information, when we do a clinic. The state allows us to bill for our time, the not for the actual dose. But for our time, and they can cut us a check for that. So this is the tall ask of ninety three hundred, and I'll have a better number as we get closer. To purchasing more vaccine and working with UMass billing on the exact number.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And and just staying on that, Susan, are there any special requirements for refrigeration or or keeping the vaccine when we get it?
No, under due to COVID, I was able to purchase a large refrigerator and freezer that will house both the flu and. Booster doses.
Thank you. Phil?
Susan, first of all, you know, you've done just such great work last couple of years, getting us through the pandemic and. Can't thank you enough as a community. And I know we're gonna talk about. Make possible clinics later later this evening, but you know, anytime you need our assistance with anything. Do not hesitate to reach out because we will always support you. And I know that it seems like this pandemic, every time we think we we cross a. Cross a hurdle here, you know, another variant flares up, but. Keep, you know, keep doing what you're doing and keep keep pushing forward. It's appreciated your work.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any member of the public have questions on this? I see none. Susan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am wondering, while we have Susan here. If we can perhaps move up our COVID nineteen update and vaccine clinic discussion to just follow. This discussion, so we'll take that out of order. Tom, is that okay with you?
That would be great. Thank you very much, Joe.
And Susan. Okay, so. We have now concluded our fiscal year twenty three department budget request for this meeting. We will have subsequent ones at subsequent meetings. For subsequent for different departments. So. I'd like to now take up the COVID nineteen update and vaccine clinic discussion. So I'm gonna turn this over, Tom, to you and Susan.
Great, thank you. And I I don't want to steal Susan's Susan's thunder, but I can give a very general overview and she can fill in the blanks that I will. Leave in my wake. The, so as you all know, Susan is our rock. She's been there since day one. Of this pandemic and and every day since, and I do mean every day. So to that end, we are recognizing that the uptick in our COVID cases in town. Is necessitating. A well, is causing a bit of a rush on booster shots and making it a little bit more difficult for residents to receive their boosters. Through the private sector pharmacies that they had been available at relatively easily. Prior to this uptick. So given that Susan has been working for the last week or so, couple of weeks on on identifying. The appropriate way to to respond to that. And and it sounds like she'll she can speak to a regional effort that we're. We've been working on with the town of Cohasset.
We are given a grant to do regional services with four towns Cohasset, Hull, Hingham. And Situate. We've been working closely with Cohasset to run a regional clinic possibly on or definitely on. The fourth, the Tuesday, that will let us train. Both my staff and the fire department for the new software that we'll be using. And this software is able to, like I mentioned previously, bill. People's insurance for the time. There's no charge for the. Booster or any COVID or any flu vaccine. It's what your primary care doctors would do. So it's not anything different that any primary care would be doing. It's through the insurance and the patient doesn't see anything. We'll be doing that clinic at the Baptist like we did before. We'll be using the CERT team to manage the parking lot and monitor people waiting in their cars fifteen minutes. We'll be able to put a link out there that residents can. Register for this booster clinic themselves. If they need help, just like Jen said, we can use the senior center and assist them with. Registering for the booster. We'll be using the Moderna. Moderna is about half the dose that you got for your first and second. So this booster dose is half the dose. And I think that's it. We can advertise heavily on our social media, our website will do. Put a piece in Harbor Media just to let all residents know that we'll be running a regional clinic with Cohasset. I expected to go for a full day. And I have about six hundred doses of COVID on order. I'm waiting to hear back from the state, but just like Tom said. Because of the uptick and the new variant, they can't guarantee when I'm getting it. So I would love to post a clinic for tomorrow, but. As I learned last year, I gotta wait until I have it in my hand and then I'll post the clinic because I had to cancel about a hundred and eighty. Of our seniors because I never got the dose. So I'm gonna wait till I get it. They don't. Tell me the delivery date. It's not like Amazon. So we have the supplies to hold on to it, and then we'll post the clinic and. Work with the residents on registering. I think this year, this clinic is gonna be much easier and seamless with the new software. Compared to our last booster clinics. It'll be for eighteen and over for just boosters and Moderna.
If you don't mind, can I add to that, Joe? Just real quick?
Please.
So the. So Susan has also been working with with the state. To ask to have the state set up and run on through the state program with the school department, a. A a mobile clinic that will be held in the future on a Saturday. We don't know what Saturday yet. But through the school department and through the DPH, there will be a deep, a mobile vaccine clinic for. The five to eleven age group. And that will be coming here in the in the coming weeks, depending on the DPH's availability. And then the other thing Susan and I just had an opportunity to speak about shortly before this meeting is we're contemplating trying to hold a mini clinic. In advance of what will likely be a very large, a much larger and busier clinic on January fourth. But perhaps a mini clinic somewhere around the week of the twenty seventh, so maybe the twenty eighth. But details to follow. We're trying to check on on staffing availability, on venue availability and the like. So. More to follow on that, but we are we are in conversation about that as well. We understand that people are having trouble getting their. Getting their booster shots now through the private sector, and we want to try to make sure we can help them get that done as soon as possible.
Thanks, Tom. I forget what I did yesterday, so thanks. Schools are kind of important. Miss that one.
Yes, Susan, Tom, thank you. So just getting back to the booster shots, I know that we will be administering. The Moderna, but if someone was initially vaccinated with the Pfizer, can they also be going to this clinic?
Yep, I'll get that information out to the residents. CDC says you can mix doses now.
Great. So thank you, because I know. A number of us have heard from residents looking for assistance with boosters and also for vaccinating children. You've responded to both. The town town wants it and you're delivering. So so thank you. Liz, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, but thank you for all your efforts on this. It is, it's so important and and the community is asking for it. So thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, that's great to hear. Great news on both fronts. When when do you think we'll have confirmation on either the clinic for children or the. The confirmation on the booster for adults?
I I can speak to the booster one where we're waiting to hear from a venue, the venue that we're hoping to have it at. We're hoping to hear from them tomorrow. And and, you know, tomorrow, the next day, something like that, but very much hoping that that. Is sooner than later and so that we can start to plan some of that. And by the way, I'd also wanted to point out, and I'll state this in my. COVID report later, that to the extent we are able to hold these clinics as we did. With the original vaccine clinics about a year ago or so. We if we hold them through the Baptist Church, please make sure everyone understands and recognizes that they are simply. And very graciously donating their venue to us. They are not coordinating this effort. All coordination for this effort. Is through the town and should come through my office or the fire department. So I just wanted to make sure that nobody's calling over to the Baptist Church and and asking them a bunch of questions that they're not gonna have answers to. So.
Good, good point. Are there any?
I'm I'm sorry, Bill, you also asked about the schools. Any sense when we might hear about that?
I'm gonna work with. The schools on that. They're gonna come. So it's a mobile vaccine clinic that DPH puts together and they provide everything soup to nuts. They need a warm building, electricity and some chairs to space everybody out. And they'll be administering the shot. So I thought this is a great way to get the pediatric doses into arms. And then we're just kind of work with the schools on availability. I know they have basketball and things like that, so we're waiting to. I'll work with Gary on the details.
It's just follow up question, Susan. Susan, so. Given the fact on on that one. Do do people, would people be registering through the state for that? Because it's state run, state operated?
Probably.
Probably, okay.
Yeah, it's this, they they're using the same color software that you would register. And we chose to do it on a Saturday, so the parents can take them. So then you, they don't have to fill out that self agitation sheet. And the parents can consent because that's the big deal. They have more of the details, but they, the state has come in when we had clusters. Paul Austin worked with the state and that mobile testing came right in. So they provide everything soup to nuts. So it's similar to that program. The town also used the state mobile. Vaccine clinic for our homebound. So there was a couple of opportunities that I reached out to the state to work with these different groups. And they come in and provide those kind of services. So Bill, it's probably similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion we want to have with respect to testing? As far as I know, the testing has been available at the local drugstores. I've got some questions about whether or not we were going to reinstitute a testing center. I think the answer is no, but Tom and Susan, let me just ask you if you have anything to add.
I don't think there's a big need. There's binex now that you can buy over the counter for CVS and D E C guidance is. Recognizing that in the beginning, a couple of months ago, D E C wasn't really putting too much face to those binex now, but now the data has shown that they're pretty accurate. So they're using those in terms of quarantining and test and stay in the schools. My opinion is. I would rather get it more into the boosters in the clinics than get into testing.
I can answer, Joe, just quickly, the COVID nineteen testing is available at the CVS on Commercial Street in Weymouth. The CVS in Rockland Street, excuse me, on Rockland Street in Hanover and the CVS on Main Street in Southway.
Great. Okay, so Tom, do you want to just continue with the rest of your COVID report if you've got anything else?
Sure, happy to read it. According to the DPH, Massachusetts has been experiencing a sharp increase in COVID nineteen cases since early November. In Hingham, we're seeing a significant more recent uptick in new COVID nineteen cases as well. The DPH is reporting eighty new COVID nineteen cases during the fourteen day period ending December second. Compared to forty four cases over the two week period ending November twenty fifth. So that's almost doubled. In light of this significant uptick, I'd like to remind people to continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID nineteen. Public health protocols. To prevent the spread of COVID nineteen include wearing a face, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, frequently washing hands. Being vaccinated and certainly among other measures that we've all heard over the last year and a half. The overall vaccination rate for Hingham is seventy six percent. If you look at only vaccine eligible individuals in Hingham, so that's people over five, the percent of fully vaccinated eligible residents is now eighty percent. According to the DPH, approximately fifty four percent of Hingham residents ages five to eleven have received one dose of a COVID nineteen vaccine. And the the Hingham Fire, the Hingham Health and Fire Departments are working to organize a regional vaccine booster clinic like we just spoke about with the town of Cohasset. For Tuesday, January fourth. The clinic will take place at the Salsua Baptist Church in Hingham. And will offer Moderna booster shots to residents from Hingham and Cohasset. We will publish details about how to register once we have received the vaccine supplies. We will also potentially hold a mini clinic. For Hingham residents, Hingham residents only on December twenty eighth with limited booster shots available. News on that. Mini clinic is yet to come. Regarding other local resources include there's a drive up vaccine clinic at the Marshfield Fairgrounds now. On Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays from nine AM to four PM. Again, that's the Marshfield Fairgrounds. On Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays from nine AM to four PM. The Johnson and Johnson, Moderna and Pfizer vaccines are all available at the Marshfield Clinic. They have encouraging, they have been encouraging people to make appointments at marshfield ma.gov. But we'll also offer shots to those without appointments while supplies last. Those without appointments should arrive before two PM. And they are offering first and second vaccine doses as well as booster shots. The holiday schedule for the Marshfield Clinic will be Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday during the Christmas week. So that's December twenty first through the twenty third. And New Year's week, December twenty eighth through the thirtieth, from nine AM to four PM. CVS and Walgreens locations in Hingham are offering vaccines by appointment only, but no COVID nineteen testing. Local Walgreens have booster boosters available during the week of December twentieth. And as I just said, CVS locations that are offering COVID nineteen testing include the CVS on Commercial Street in Weymouth. CVS on Rockland Street in Hanover and CVS on Main Street in Southway. That's all, Joe.
Liz, any questions on the COVID reports?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill? Susan, anything you wanted to add? Any member of the public have questions on our COVID report? Seeing none, Susan, thank you. Really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss the potential appointment of police candidates. And I believe we have Chief Jones here on the line. And I believe I see Ryan O'Shea. And so David, before turning over to you, I want to talk to Tom about what is available in terms of appointments? What are we looking to do? We initially had discussion that there were, we'd be looking to appoint for two openings in the police department. Could you give us an update on that?
Sure. Thank you, Joe. We had reported out originally that there were two vacancies. There are two current vacancies. However, we have determined that there will be significant, a significantly more number of vacancies in the coming months. And we want to take advantage of this, of this group today and make sure that you are all aware of the larger number than of vacancies. So there are certainly enough vacancies. I think there's five to seven total vacancies anticipated over the next several months. That is all of, all of our current budgeting will accommodate up to and including all five vacancies as the board deems appropriate.
So with that, Chief Jones, if I can turn it over to you. I do see that we have the Hingle, Hingham Police Department Squad Room picture, which shows our five candidates. And so we would like to hear, Chief, your recommendation.
Good evening, Joe. Thank you. So we initiated the process to fill the two current police officer openings in September of this year. And while I outlined the process in detail last week, a brief overview of what we have done to date is as follows. All recruit candidates have been screened with a comprehensive, in-depth background investigation, evaluated during a police panel interview and finally interviewed by the board, a select board last week. This is in addition to the medical, psychological and physical fitness testing that they must complete. The five candidates that you interviewed last week all performed admirably during the entire process. And we are proud to be able to present such a committed group for your consideration. All of the candidates showed a genuine desire to give back to our community and they embodied our core values of integrity, service, excellence and leadership. For the two current vacancies, I recommended the board extend a conditional offer of employment to Hugh Healy and Tim Moriarty, the two top scoring candidates on the civil service list, both of whom are also military veterans. Now, under normal circumstances, it would be difficult to make a recommendation of only two recruit candidates when we have five incredibly qualified and dedicated individuals. Given the fact that it takes approximately one year to hire and train a new officer, I'm respectfully requesting that the board consider my recommendation of extending additional condition, conditional offers of employment to Ryan Finney, Ashley Duff and Ryan Achilles to fill anticipated vacancies that will open up within the next several months. After a review of our current budget, we project that we'll be able to absorb all five candidates within our allotted funding, thereby avoiding significant staffing shortages, employee fatigue and increased overtime costs. Thank you for your continued support and consideration of these five candidates.
Thank you. We have Deputy Police Chief Ryan O'Shea here. Is there anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Now we're very happy with these candidates. They all presented and interviewed very well and were excellent police officers.
Thank you. So just speaking for myself personally, I was just so impressed and honored to meet each candidate, to hear their views, to see how earnest they were to serve the community. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to consider the candidates and to make a decision about adding them to our wonderful police department. So I will turn to, I like to hear from my, my fellow select board members. Bill, I want to start with you.
Thank you, Joe. I want to congratulate the applicants and say what, what an honor this is for me to appoint these, these five tremendous, you tried five tremendous individuals. And I want to point something out, and I think this is very important to point this out. I discussed this with Tom this past week and I mentioned this to the chief as well. To Ms. Duff and to Mr. Moriarty, you will be joining your siblings on the department. And to Mr. Achilles, you will have the honor of joining your father. This is in addition to the Goldstein and the Tracy brothers who already serve on the department. To have so many families serving together on the same law enforcement agency speaks volumes of you, your families, this community and the men and women of the Hingham Police Department. I will tell you that one of the, one of the greatest professional jobs I had in my legal career was working as an assistant district attorney in Plymouth County. And without a doubt, the Hingham Police Department is not only the greatest police department in Plymouth County, it's one of the best police departments in the entire state. And I know the five of you will only make that police department even better. And to the other two applicants, to Mr. Finney, I, I'm very familiar with you, with your family's distinguished career of service to this country and to this community. And I know that you will have a distinguished career on the police department. And to Mr. Healy, you've already distinguished your own, your own self in service to this country and as a federal law enforcement officer, and you will do great things for the department as well. So I am honored and thrilled to make these appointments tonight and I wish you all the best of luck. And I hope that you all, all help each other getting through the academy. I look forward to seeing you all in uniform in the future months.
Thank you. Liz.
Thank you for, for saying that, Bill. I know the, the candidates, I think, were quite humble during the, during the interviews and didn't talk about some of those family connections, which of course are so important in the, the commitment to Hingham and serving this community that many of you grew up in. So thank you. I am equally impressed with, with all of the candidates. Honored to have interviewed you and honored to make these appointments tonight. I feel completely comfortable moving forward with all five. I think it makes sense from a planning perspective in terms of staffing and budgeting. So happy to, happy to move forward. Thank you, Chief Jones, for coming up with this creative solution.
Tom, is there anything you wanted to add before we go to a vote on this?
Other than to say that the chief and I have talked today, like I said, there's, there is room in the existing budget. This is not additional dollars and, and this will help us both with, with on, with our ongoing overtime issues in terms of cost and, and by having, by being more fully staffed going forward. So I think this is like Liz said, a very creative and, and excellent solution. So I would thank the chief.
So with that, I would like to accept the motion on this. Bill or Liz, would you like, which one of you would like to do it or, or, or I could do it?
I'm happy to make the motion. I have the list of names. Tom, just to be clear, it doesn't need to be in any particular order, does it?
So. I don't believe it does. Dave?
Should be in, if you have the order that are in the civil service list, but otherwise it doesn't matter.
So yeah, I, I would recommend, Bill, that you do it in the order of the civil services. Do you, do you have that?
The list that I have here was not the list that the chief read. So if you have that, Joe, do you want, do you want to?
I am looking to see if I have that in.
Yeah, the list I have was not the, the list that the chief read. And if, if there is a legal consequence to the order, I want to make sure we get it right.
Yes. Bear with me.
Bill and Joe, the, the order that I read them in is the order they are on, on the list.
So why don't you read the order again or just read what you have and I will mark this so that we do it correctly. So please read your recommendation again.
So I have Hugh Healy, Tim Moriarty.
Yep.
Ryan Finney.
Yeah, um, yep.
Ashley Duff and Ryan Achilles.
Got it. Did you get that, Bill, or do you want me to do it?
I can do it.
Okay, great.
All right. All right. I would make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Hugh Healy, Tim Moriarty, Ryan Finney, Ashley Duff and Ryan Achilles. As permanent police officers for the town of Hingham, this offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screen, screening examinations and all of other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination. B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test, PAT. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirements for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to repayment of the $4,650 recruit training fee and cost of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer ceases employment with the town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. G, subject to an available appropriation and any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Before we take a vote, now that you've heard, now that the police candidates have heard the conditions, does anyone want to back out? No, no one's raising their hands. So now we will, we will vote, a roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It's approved. Congratulations, candidates. We look forward to your long service with the Hingham Police Department. Good luck with your training.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone.
And Chief Jones, Deputy Chief O'Shea, your efforts. And I know it's not just you, it's the department that has done a lot of work. Recruitment is critical and we do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe, and thank you to Bill and Liz and all of you for your kind words. And I would like, also like you just mentioned, Joe, recognize the officers that put so much time into making the, this process success for these five candidates that are before us.
I, this, these sorts of votes and occasions, I wish we were in person. But I'm sure we will have other opportunities to, to meet and greet and to work with these fine ladies and gentlemen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a joint session with the Board of Assessors to interview an additional candidate for the vacancy of the Board of Assessors. And so at this point, I would like to ask the members of the Board of Assessors to call their meeting to order unless you already have.
No, we have not called the Board of Assessors meeting to order at 8:04 PM.
See, thank you. So the, we, we previously interviewed two candidates for the Board of Assessors. And back in June, we had received another Talent Bank application by, from Al Chambers. And I had neglected to, to include him in our initial interview process. So this is an opportunity for us to, in fact, conduct that interview for someone as a potential candidate for the opening on the Board of Assessors. So with that, what we did last time is first I opened it up. If either current member of the Board of Assessors has, have questions they would like to ask to Al Chambers. Is he on? I just want to make sure. I do not see him. Oh, there he is. It's, I see, it says Al. Are you there, Al? Can you unmute yourself? You won't be able to answer unless you unmute yourself. There we go. Can you hear me? Al, are you there? This may be a very short interview if we can, if we can't hear. Michelle, is there anything you can do to?
I'm not sure I have his phone number. Aaron might be able to give it to me.
I think it, it may be on his application from June.
Okay, one second.
Yeah, I don't have it on my, in my phone, Michelle. I'll look as well.
It is on his, there are two phone numbers on his application.
His line is busy. I'll try the other one.
So if we cannot get this resolved within the next 30 seconds, we can move on to the next item, which is the tax classification discussion. But let's just see if we get this handled. Michelle, is this a short fix or a long fix?
So Al is there. He's just having a little bit of audio visual trouble. I can try putting him on speakerphone right here. I don't know if, if Al, you can hear me on the board and vice versa. Can the board hear him well enough through the speaker here?
I can, but are we going to get feedback?
Listen to the meeting and gets off the Zoom. Would that help?
Yes, that's a great idea. So if, if we can't hear him through his connection on the Zoom hearing, maybe he's just terminated and that it's only through, through you. He's, he would need to kill his audio or, or hang up, either one.
Joe, he is going to leave the meeting on the computer just one second.
Okay. There we go.
Al, see if this works. You're on live through my phone here with the board.
Al, can you hear us?
Apologize that I haven't gotten the picture up, some of the video. I look forward to this opportunity to meet with you all. I have been around Hingham a long time. In fact, a long time ago, I was the, on the Development Industrial Commission. We rezoned South Hingham for the industrial parks up there, including the Derby Street shops. I've turned on a number of committees, including affordable housing and. I've served on a number of committees, including affordable housing and, also, I've been on, active in the citizens' police, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My career started in banking, and I spent years as a commercial banker in Boston and then went into the mortgage banking field, into the development of mortgage-backed securities nationwide, which I did for a number of years. Upon retirement, I, I sold real estate for a number of years here in Hingham, and I feel I have a command of financial issues that affect real estate as well as some of the activities of the town.
Thank you, Al. So I know you have served on the Board of Assessors before. We have the two current members, Chrissy Roberts and Joshua Ross on the line, and I'm going to turn it over to them first to see if they have any questions, and then I'll turn it over to members of the Select Board. So Chrissy, I'll start with you.
Hi, Al, how are you?
Thank you.
I know Al pretty well from working together, so I really don't have any questions about qualifications. My only question is whether your interest is more on just the short-term appointment or a longer term running for the next term on the board.
Hi, I actually am interested in it, Chrissy, because I loved the job. I thought it was very interesting, and I thought we had an absolutely fabulous staff. The, I would, without question, run again if given the chance.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Josh. Hello, Mr. Chambers, how are you?
Yes, Josh.
Yes, it is, sorry. Al and I got to know each other quite well over the six months ago through a number of debates, so I actually don't have any questions for, for Mr. Chambers as well.
Great, okay, thank you. Liz.
Hi, Al, it's Liz Klein, how are you?
Hi, Liz, I'm fine.
Good. So I, since you have served on the board before, I'd love to hear from your perspective what you see as the role of, of the Board of Assessors.
Well, actually, actually, Liz, it's a simple rule. Town is thirty square miles of territory, and the value of the land within it and its possessions for improvements is almost $8 billion. The assessor's job is to establish the value accurately of all of those properties, including the non-taxable properties, but essentially it's just to establish the value accurately. The, the department itself, the assessors, is broken into two different divisions. You've got a professional staff, of which I've spoken warmly of because they deserve it, and secondly, your elected officials, which goes back, believe it or not, to the Tea Party, when you could not tax anyone the purpose thing, you could not tax someone without citizen representation. So we represent citizens on the assessment of the value of the properties, and then assuming that that's accurate, turn it over for control by the town.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Bill Ramsey.
Al, how are you?
Hey, Bill. I'm just getting your voice, Bill.
Oh, it's good, good to hear your voice as well. Hey, to be fair to all the applicants, I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked everybody else. You know, we, we see a lot of, we see a lot of houses selling in town way above what they're assessed at. Recently, I saw a house sell for about, you know, four and a half million, it was assessed at like 1.2. Do we need to reform the way we're doing assessments in town? Or do we, is this something, do we just let the market kind of work this thing out? I mean, I'm kind of curious to see, do we need to change the way we're doing things or just not a period we're going through in town and we just let kind of the market figure this thing out?
Well, yeah, actually, Bill, I, I know that that bothers you a lot, that particular property, but to me, it's an absolute anomaly. It's a mistake, and the mistake is not the town's. The, if our records, our performance records over the past five or six years show our assessments have been consistently in the mid-90s, which is just great performance. So what I'm suggesting, of course, we can't discuss that property on this line or publicly, but it sounds to me like somebody pays too much for the property, and we should increase the assessment to help reach their expectations, or, well, have them rethink it. In real estate, there is an old saying, the saying is that the value of property depends on what a willing and independent buyer will pay for it. If someone was willing to pay that much more than the assessed value, I, I'm genuinely surprised, but I think it's not a reflection on the accuracy of the work being done by your existing assessors.
Great, thanks, Al, appreciate it.
Okay.
Al, this is, you, you can't, you, you're not finished yet, Al, I've got some questions for you. It's Joe Fisher. A couple of questions. I know that the candidate who gets onto the Board of Assessors needs to go through a training process. Have you been through that training process already?
Yes, I have. The, yes, I have, and, and so that's under my belt. It's not easy, by the way, and assessors are given, I think, over two years to complete it, but, but I come in there with my credentials intact.
And just another question, are you familiar with the abatement process? And what, how do you understand your role in, in processing abatements?
Um, you know, abatements, let's start off with the premise that one-third of this town has people, citizens and taxpayers that are over 65. Abatements are really governed by what you can and can't do. It's highly regulated, but someone who is looking for this, an abatement, it's very important to listen to their cause and make sure that the law applies to them before we grant them abatements. Now, what's unfortunate is, the commercial properties are assessed at the same level as the towns. I think the commercial properties, to be honest with you, are getting away with murder for the most part, but we don't dare take a step at this time to, to raise the value of the assessments on commercial property. I pretty much opposed every request for an abatement from a commercial property during the five years I've served, and with one exception, which bothered me, at Tom's suggestion, our largest taxpayer was Lyndon Ponce. They asked for a fairly substantial reduction in their tax, tax amounts, and I was opposed to it and voted against it, but we really did not have a lot of choice, because they were sweeping us towards a court case where if we had lost it, might have exposed the town to a million-dollar loss of tax revenues. So we tried to go along with it. I hope I've answered the question for you.
Yes, thank you. So I, I've got no other questions. Bill, Liz, are you, you complete?
Yes, no other questions.
Okay.
I did, one other question, I'm sorry. Well, one other question the other two applicants got that Al should have a shot at too is, Al, we're both, we're both to vote on the issue on the split tax rate difference between commercial and residential. What are your thoughts on that?
Would you, would you re-ask me that?
Yeah, you know, the, every year, it comes up of whether or not we should, split tax rate between commercial and residential.
Oh, I am not. This is not the time to consider it. Right now, downtown still has some very hurting retail operations, and they are not necessarily all mom and pop. If you were to drive through the Derby Street Shops tomorrow and take a look at how many brand-new businesses are in there, the turnover has been phenomenal because of the expense of operating out of there. Also, on the waterfront, the only new property to go down at the shipyard has been the proposed fire station, and they have had turnover after turnover after turnover. So I do not think this is the correct time until we have a restructuring or a re-advance of our financial situation in the town for our many retail people. And also, the one thing we should be watching every minute is the undeveloped 300-acre site oppressed from Lyndon, Lyndon Ponce. Whatever happens to that, it change dramatically our wish to tax commercial properties differently. At one point, I know Marriott was considering putting a place up there. So there are four parts to it. I don't think this is the time to consider it, but the time may come.
Yep. So you're talking about the development of, of South Hingham? And that's, that is something that this, this board has been, has been looking at. Al, thank you.
Can I answer that question, Bill? Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, absolutely. I was, I was just looking for your thoughts on it. I appreciate, appreciate your, your perspective. Thank you.
You go.
Okay, with that, Michelle, I think we can end the call with Al Chambers.
All right.
Thanks. Okay, what, so what we did at our last meeting was, we had decided not to vote so that folks could consider for more than five minutes the responses of the potential candidates. I would take the, the same view now that I would like to consider for more than five minutes the responses that we've heard from Al Chambers, but to get this for a vote at our very next meeting. So is, is that, does that work, Bill, with, for you and Liz, for you?
Yes.
It's fine.
And then?
Next week?
I'm sorry?
Well, next week will be the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But depending upon availability of Chrissy and, and Josh, are, are you available next week?
Is that a week from today?
What's the date? Sorry.
Yeah, let's look at the calendar, so.
Fourteen.
Yes.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, I can make it work if we, if we are voting next week.
And if you.
Are we, are we voting or are you voting? Sorry.
I think we are, all of us are voting.
Okay.
And if you can just coordinate with, with Tom's office in terms of like, if you need it early in the agenda or late, if, you know, depending on your timing, we'll certainly accommodate whatever other commitments you have.
Okay.
Great. So then I am prepared to turn to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion and vote on the tax classification. And I believe that the Board of Assessors has had a hearing and has had their vote, and I would like a presentation. I think that would come from Erin Walsh.
Yes.
Great. Good to see you, Erin.
Good to see you as well. So I'm here tonight to talk about the fiscal year 2022 classification hearing.
Erin, do you want me to pull up the slides or would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to.
I can do it. Okay. Nope, nope, I got them. Just tell me next slide.
Okay, great. The next slide would be great. So the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes. The classification does not change the total levy for the community, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. So the next slide would be great. The classification does not determine the tax rate for the town, it does not determine how much money can be raised. A split tax rate will not increase revenue for the town, and a split tax rate shifts some of the burden from all of the residential properties onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. So this pie shows us in the town of Hingham how the majority of our residential properties are, make up most of our value, so about 89% of our total assessed value is residential. And then the next slide shows the differences between, sort of breaks it down in terms of the residential being 89.29%, and then the total commercial, industrial, and personal property makes up 10.71%. We have nothing in open space because all of our open space is either exempt, it's either town-owned or state-owned, and instead of classifying as open space, we have something called chapter land. So we have four properties that fall into that tax classification where there's 61, Chapter 61A, where two of our properties are classified as agricultural or horticultural for tax purposes, so they receive a tax discount to, as long as they have five contiguous acres, and that is, so that's a 61A, and then we have two properties that are 61B, which are classified as recreational land, and that's also five contiguous acres, they also receive a reduction on their taxes. This chapter land program benefits the town in that when they decide to sell, the town has the right of first refusal, so they're able to purchase if they decide to move it out of their chapter land classification, the town can actually purchase it if they decide to. And there are rollback taxes, so for the past five years, the owner of the property would have to pay the, the difference between what they've been assessed at and the full value for the past five years. So the next slide shows some information regarding the split rate. So in fiscal year 2021, 108 out of our 351 communities has a split tax rate. 96% of those communities have split the tax rate for more than 10 years. The average residential percentage for a split tax rate communities is about 79%, and the average residential percentage for single-rate towns is 88.58%. Of the 27 cities and towns in Plymouth County, five have a split tax rate, and the average residential percentage of these five communities is about 80%, a little over 80%. This shows our average property values the past three years. So there's been an increase from fiscal '21 to fiscal '22 of, for single-family, it's gone about a little, just shy of 6%, and for condominiums, it went up over 8% the assessed value. Our commercial, industrial, and property, and personal property went down a little bit, and that was just based on the number of personal property accounts that was increased, and therefore the average value went down a little bit. The next slide breaks down all of our values. So our total this year valuation is $8,43,900,843,450. So the total valuation from last year to this year increased about 5%, which is the is the highest increase in the last 10 years, actually. So our total residential that you see there went up just shy of 6%. Our commercial stayed just about the same. It increased slightly, and then there's a slight decrease in our industrial. And that was based on depreciation of values, and our personal property went up over 8%. So the next slide shows the impact of if we did decide to split the tax rate, starting with a 10% shift. So a 10% shift would change the residential about a little over 1%. But the commercial, industrial, and personal property would go up about 10%. And then it just shows as you go up. So based on this year's tax rate, which is 1180, the highest shift would result in commercial properties paying about 50% more in taxes, while residential parcels would save about 6%, a little over 6%. So in closing, the next slide shows that in the town of Hingham for fiscal year 2022, the residential class is about 89% and commercial, industrial, and personal property is about 11%. So anecdotal evidence suggests the towns whose commercial, industrial, and personal property is between about 20 and 25% cautiously begin to consider a split tax rate. A tax classification study was performed here in Hingham in 2013 where they recommended a single rate. They stated that no additional study regarding a split tax rate be required until such time that a percentage of commercial properties versus residential properties has significantly increased or as a result of some other qualifying event. The commercial industrial property percentage at that time was about 12%. And one thing to consider as well is once a community does decide to split the tax rate, it's very difficult to go back to a single tax rate without placing burden on the residential class. And a lot of different communities believe that a split tax rate may be considered somewhat anti-business and may discourage businesses from locating in the community. So a residential factor one will result in a single tax rate. Adopting a single tax rate is consistent with our past practices. So on December 2nd of 2021, the Board of Assessors met. They discussed and reviewed the classification issues and options. A motion was made and the vote was unanimous to recommend to the Select Board a residential factor of one, which is a single tax rate for fiscal year 2022. And that is all I have.
So, um, so Erin, thank you. That was very comprehensive.
You're welcome.
Chrissy or Josh, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. So I, well, first, thanks, Erin and Jackie and the team for doing all this work over the year. You know, I've only been doing this for a short time. But with close to 9,000 properties in Hingham that they are responsible for, they do an outstanding job. So I just want to say that off the bat. You know, digging into the data for this particular subject, it's pretty clear that I don't think Hingham will ever get to this 20% rate, you know, as a benchmark to reassess commercial versus residential rate. You know, one of the big surprises to me when, when doing the research is that the big commercial apartment complexes are considered residential, regardless if they're owned by a big corporation, for-profit organization. So looking at just historically over the last couple of years, the three biggest construction projects in this town have all been apartment complexes. So they fall into the residential area. And so you know, if, you know, I did some calculations. So if those were considered commercial, then we would be somewhere around 20%. But it's a state thing. It's not a Hingham thing. It's probably a national thing too. So that, so that being said, I think one of the things that we, we sort of need to look at, if we aren't going to raise the, or change the one-to-one ratio. You know, I think one of the things that we need to look at is, one, making sure all the commercial and industrial properties are assessed evenly across the board. That's something we can do. And something that was, you know, that was brought to my attention or is the law, is that commercial properties, and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, only need to be assessed by law once every five years. And so we have our reassessment as a town next year. And then digging into some of the the assessments on commercial properties, you know, there was this set of times, set of years, 18, 19, 20, that'll, you know, of the properties I looked at, didn't have an assessment adjustment. So I think going forward, one of the things we can do is make sure the commercial properties increase and decrease relative to what the residential properties are doing as we adjust them every year. Now, I know this takes money because it is a different process to assess commercial and, and versus residential because of some of the additional paperwork and data needed. But given next year is a reassessment and they're all going to be reassessed anyway, I think it's prudent to look at reassessing commercial properties more often than the once every five years that we need to, in order to make sure that they are in line with our, our residential properties.
But Josh, we don't, we don't assess every, we don't assess commercial properties every five years. We look at them every year. It's just a matter of sales. Commercial properties just don't sell as much as residential properties. So that's why you're not going to see a value change as often as you would with residential.
Correct, because of the comps, the comps that go along with, it's easier to get a residential comp than it is a, a commercial comp. When building, when commercial properties aren't selling. But that also doesn't necessarily mean that the assessment, you know, part of the assessment is the, is the value of the land and the value of the, the property. So again, it's just something I've noticed over doing some research in this.
So I want to steer the conversation, if I can, back to the specific issue before us, which is the one-to-one. Not, not the frequency that we need assessment. That I think is properly in your jurisdiction. And I leave it to you, Chrissy and the third member, to handle that appropriately. Our, our discussion here really is looking at your recommendation, which was to, to a residential, a residential factor of one as a single tax rate. And I, I appreciate your, your thoughts on, on the broader issues. I, I know that, you know, whether it's commercial or whether it's residential, in each case, you're looking at full and fair cash value, and that's the standard. So with that, Liz or Bill, did you have any questions about whether or not we should accept the, the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to do a residential factor of one?
I just had one question about the process. The December 2nd meeting, is that, was that a public hearing or did you have, take public comment during that meeting?
No, we didn't. With that, was just our Board of Assessors meeting. There was no public there.
But it
But it was a public meeting.
It was a public meeting, but yeah, no public ever attends our meetings.
No one shows up, right. But it was duly noticed and people could have showed up if they wanted.
It was posted. We meet in person, actually, our board. And yeah, no, nobody was there, but it was public and yeah.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
You are all welcome to join us. We get lonely.
What, what are you serving? And maybe we'll consider it.
Whatever you want.
Bill, any, any questions?
Erin, this was helpful. I agree with the recommendation. I, I would be concerned about putting too much, adding too much stress to the small businesses that we have in town. We just don't have a lot of large businesses that I think that could take this on. I just, I think as business in town, I think of downtown Hingham and our need to try to help them survive and keep downtown going. So I concur with the recommendation.
Erin, I, I did have one question. You mentioned this, the study that was, where did that go here? It was in 2013, was it?
Yes.
Who did that study?
It was, I know one of the Board of Assessors was part of the committee. I would, I would have to look back. I wasn't here at that time, but I know that there was a Board of Assessors member and then there was, I think, three other people that were involved, but I don't have the specifics.
Okay. Any member of the public have comments or questions on this? Seeing none, this is a Select Board vote. I will accept the motion.
I will make a motion to adopt a residential factor of one, a single tax rate for fiscal year 2022.
We move in second. We do a roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. It's approved. And we thank you for the recommendation and for the work. And it's, it's not, this is not trivial stuff. So we appreciate your diligence. Erin, thank you for the report. And Chrissy and Josh, I look forward to speaking with you soon.
I'd like to echo the congratulations to Erin and the whole team. They, they do a lot of work every year and it's a great group in there. And I also would ask for a motion to adjourn our Board of Assessors meeting at 8:42 PM.
I will make a motion to adjourn, adjourn the Board of Assessors 8:42 PM.
Second. Roll call. Chrissy Roberts?
You're not Chrissy. I said, no.
So awkward, so awkward. And Joshua's. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. We can move to our next item on the agenda. We have already handled the COVID-19 update and vaccine clinic discussion. I don't believe we have any appointments for this evening. So I'll now open it up for comments from members of the public who may have comments on items not on our agenda. Seeing none, I move to the Town Administrator Select Board reports, starting with our Town Administrator, Tom Mayo.
Nothing tonight. Thank you very much. Just to remind everyone about the uptick in COVID and to protect yourselves and others.
Yes. Michelle?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Art?
Thank you. Only to say, I'm very impressed with the budget presentations and more broadly, the very disciplined budget process that the town of Hingham has. Thank you.
Liz Klein?
Nothing to report.
Bill Ramsey?
Nothing tonight.
And I also have nothing further this evening. So with that, we have an executive session coming up. So the Board will enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining process of the town. The Board will not reconvene in open session, so I will accept a motion to enter into executive session on those terms.
So moved.
So a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. Public meeting is adjourned. We will go to executives, executive session. Thank you.